This meeting will now come to order. Juanita, can you take this?
Randy Rockaway.
Here.
Lisa Gaynor.
Here.
David Kadama.
Yeah.
Rachel Morella.
Here.
Michael O'Brien.
Here.
I understand Mr. Perry, Arthur Perry, will not be in attendance tonight. And Ms. Mary Rose Mandia.
Here. All right, I pleasure ladies. I pleasure ladies.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Welcome, and we have one person signed up for public comment, Sue Gersh.
Hello, my name is Sue Gersh. I live at 8533 Rockefeller in Brookfield. I have twin boys that will be in fifth grade at Hollywood, and a daughter who's entering seventh grade at Hauser. The reason I wanted to address the board was because of the proposed parking lot that RB would like to put on the north side of Hollywood School. There are so many issues surrounding this, economic, flood issues in our neighborhood. It's not a "not in my backyard" issue, as some people at RB have indicated. But my point that I'd like to address to the board here is this is a huge safety issue for our students. The north side of Hollywood School is all classrooms and a library, our gymnasium, where the kids have gym, and they eat their lunch in that space. RB would like to build the parking lot almost up to that side of the building, and maybe put up some shrubs to make it more aesthetically pleasing. So I am here asking for the board to make a public statement against the building of this parking lot on the north side of Hollywood, regardless of if they talk about backing the parking lot up to where just removing the tennis courts and putting more parking. We do not need any additional parking in our green space outside of Hollywood School. I appreciate Mary Rose Mandia was at the June 24 facilities meeting at RB, which I was glad to see, gathering some information. But there needs to be a public statement from District 96 opposing this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Avna, do you want to tell us about the latest FOIA requests and responses?
Sure, in your packet you will see we had one FOIA request from Bob Skolik to the Attorney General's Office and the Public Access Counselor. Our response is also included in your packet. And then there's also a FOIA request from School Office Supply Vendor Warehouse Direct asking for the district's check register for the month of April, May, and June of 2014. And as you'll see, the response of our check register is also included in Board Book.
All right. Thank you. Next, we're going to have some presentations for, for some candidates for architects to help us with our life safety plan. Zach, do you have a word?
We put out an RFQ for a five-year life safety plan for architects, we're shortlisted, to four firms. We're going to have all four firms present. You're each going to have 10 minutes for presentation and five minutes for questions and Q and A. I'll be keeping time once the 15 minutes is over, and move on to the next one. Hopefully completed in the hour.
Thank you, Zach.
Okay, so I'll start bringing in, Concept Three, you're the first one in.
Zach, could you just brief, brief us on what life safety entails?
Well, life safety would entail moving projects, anything that's related to the safety of buildings and so forth. And the architects would need to explain even more.
Yeah.
And what the process is.
And it would include also things that just need to be, that are not related to life safety particularly, but the health of our buildings.
Exactly, they'll address building issues and so forth.
Okay, does it, does it not include anything?
Like I was mentioning, researches in the parking lot.
Not sure on that one.
I'm pretty sure it's not.
Okay.
So.
All right. Thank you.
You know, typically they do a 10-year life safety, and I think that's what they're probably going to mention, is when they do a life safety, it's typically 10 years. But we did request a five-year, so. Concept Three will be the first one in, I'll be right back.
Thanks, Loretta.
You have your mic there, too. All right, you have 10 minutes for your presentation. Okay. So I'll let you know a minute left for your presentation, and you have five minutes for...
He's got, he has to hold the mic.
Yeah, they would like you to hold the mic.
I know, that's good.
People at home can hear you.
All right, good evening, thank you very much. It has been our pleasure to be your Architect of Record since 2000. And we're excited on continuing our long-term relationship with your school district, and we're proud to be part of the history of you in improving your buildings and creating exceptional learning environments. All right. I am Andrew McCall. I am a principal at Concept Three Architects. I bring you 21 years of experience in the educational market. All of my experience has been learned working on schools and school districts, and my accomplishments include new schools, additions, renovations, life safety renovations. I've also compiled district-wide facility studies, construction grant applications, 10-year life safety surveys, and amendments. With all our projects, I take a hands-on role with everything that I do. I'll use Ames School as the example. I was the principal in charge on the Ames School project, and I take a lot of pride in how well that project came together for your school district. Crowning achievement in my career was the design and construction of the New Yorkville Middle School. It opened in 2008, and it's a prime example of how I coordinate the district staff and coordinate in the trenches to provide a quality project for you. Currently, I'm working on an $18 million renovation at Yorkville High School. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Richard for a quick introduction.
Hi, I'm Rich Kumnick. I also worked on your schools. My focus, probably for the last 20 years, has been on environmental issues, and I dealt with the asbestos problems and other environmental problems that we took out of your buildings the last couple of years. I also was focused on the renovation of Central School. And I'm going to go back to Andrew, you have a very short...
Thank you, Rich. Ultimately, I'd like to give you a brief history of Concept Three. We opened our doors in 1997, and at the beginning of this month, we celebrated our 17th anniversary. Our primary focus is pre-K through 12 school facilities. Concept Three Architects provides full-service architectural and engineering services. Our sister company, Concept Three Environmental, provides complete environmental consulting services. And I certainly don't want our size to fool you as to what we're able to produce. We've chosen to remain small because we want to maintain a personal relationship with all of our clients. Moving to our project team, we have assembled a seasoned team of professionals to continue to address the needs of your school buildings. I will be the principal in charge on all of your projects. Chris McAllister will be working side by side with me as the project architect. Richard Kumnick will be the lead for all of your environmental consulting needs. On the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing end, we work with AMSCO Engineering. P.S. Forest will address any structural engineering needs that may arise. And DC Engineering rounds out our team for civil or site consulting that could potentially. We've worked with this group of engineers for many years, and we're very proud of their expertise that they would provide your school district. Some distinguishing aspects of Concept Three Architects that I feel will be an asset to Riverside Public Schools, District 96, which include our new schools. Here I have an example of Yorkville Middle School that opened in 2008, and Oaklawn Hometown Middle School that opened in 2005. Both of those schools I designed and field observed the entire project from breaking ground to opening. Additions and renovation work. The top slide, which I know is a little difficult to see, is an $18 million expansion and renovation of their current high school that will be opening a portion of this fall. And then also the successful completion of your capital improvement project, which has been ongoing for many years at a tune of $25 million. Skipped over health, life, safety surveys. We have extensive knowledge with health, life, safety survey reports, amendments, as well as dealing with the Illinois State Board of Education and their IWS computer entry program. And in 2006, Concept Three Architects did complete your 10-year life safety survey. We have in-house roof consulting. Chris English, architect on our staff, specializes in designing quality roofing systems that serve the test of time. He did design the roof replacement that will be ongoing this summer at Hauser School here. And he also completed your roof asset management plan that was presented to you in 2012. As I said earlier, we do have in-house environmental consulting, Richard is an expert in addressing your environmental needs. And he did complete your three-year asbestos reinspection back in late last year, 2013. Facility plans and life safety plans. We take pride in putting together a quality document, which can be utilized by the school administration and school board, employing established practices, and also new methods within the educational community. And we did perform such a study for your school district in 2011. A quick sample that I did want to go over was another study that I did for Norwich, School District 80, in which we very carefully reviewed every aspect of their building, inside, outside, up, down, top to bottom. We gathered all the data about their buildings through existing plans and also surveying the existing facilities. But much of this information, Concept Three already knows about your school. We already have compiled all your floor plans, and we're very knowledgeable about your buildings with all the renovations that we've done over the past several years. We put together a very detailed description of every building, when each, when the original building was built, when the additions were all added on, so you know at first glance what years are associated with your building. We look at what students and how many staff members are in each building, and we provide detailed information about the construction of the building, such as what are the exterior walls, foundations, roof, we go on. As we survey the building, we'll photo document any items that we find that may be an issue that the school wants to resolve, or whether it's a life safety issue. And we'll document those with photographs. And each will get an item, and we'll also provide a floor plan representation, so you'll be able to see item number one is located in such and such area within the school. From that, we develop itemized spreadsheets. Within those spreadsheets, we'll give you a narrative of what is the issue. We'll tell you where that issue is, what, or if there are any code violations. Then each item is given a priority of one, three, to five years as to when, when we want to address it. This one, you'll notice that there are some lines that are highlighted in yellows. Those were items that Norwich School District wanted to address in the year. And we do provide at the bottom of the page a summary of these total expenditures of the report, as well as each for the one-year, three-year, and five-year for proper planning and budgeting. We also can include building utilization. Norwich wanted to know, how did they use their buildings? What students were where, how many rooms did those students occupy? So we put together compiled lists of how many students are in each grade, how many classrooms those students utilize. We were able to give the school district a detailed narrative of how the spaces work, how they don't work. And also, we put together a graphical representation with a colored floor plan showing exactly where each and every item, or student, or program is occupying in the building.
One minute.
And then, in closing, I want to say, why do you want to select Concept Three Architects? Concept Three Architects, well, our primary experience is pre-K through 12 facilities. We have in-house roof consulting and environmental consulting. We have a vested interest in satisfying your needs. And bottom line, I'd like to think that our knowledge base of your school buildings really stands true as to what we are capable of doing. And here's an itemized list from 2000 to 2014 of all the projects that we have completed for your school district since starting to work with you. So I do want to thank you very much for the opportunity to reintroduce Concept Three Architects and Concept Three Environmental to you. So I'll turn it back to you, questions that you may have.
Could you comment with your familiarity with our school system? On maybe three aspects, ADA, accessibility, building entry security, and energy efficiency of our buildings?
Okay, entry, entry and security. We certainly tried to address in all of your buildings a standard design that works very well of what's the security vestibule, in which you approach a locked door. That locked door has a camera and a buzz system that lets the visitor into the building. We implemented, I know we implemented that system at Ames School. I know we implemented a similar system here and over at Blythe in Hollywood. Certainly tried a similar system there. Energy management. Ultimately, when it comes down to the use of energy, are the buildings today using more energy than they did when they were renovated? Most likely, likely yes. But all of the systems have been brought up to code. We have the T8 or better lighting systems that are much more energy efficient. All the mechanical systems are in a computer-generated energy management system in which you're able to control when you want systems to function and operate. I'm going to have to apologize, I forgot one of your questions.
The ADA.
ADA. ADA, I know is a very difficult item to address. And when we're looking at buildings, certainly with such historic significance and age, they create interesting obstacles. I know that we certainly tried to look at bringing any disabled person in through a grade-level entrance. I know here at Central Hauser, there's a large series of chairlifts that were provided to give the student or person access to as much of the building as possible. I don't think this building is still 100% accessible with wheelchair accessibility. I know at Ames School, we certainly look very carefully at providing special needs for the students that needed it over at that school.
During the planning a few years ago, there were options that were investigated for putting elevators into the various buildings. But even like this building, if you put an elevator on this side of the campus, the other side just needs something else. And there are so many levels in these buildings that, very difficult, very, very difficult.
Sure. What's your, what's the, what do you expect for a timeline in terms of kind of start to finish for this, this end product?
Well, certainly with the 10-year life safety survey that is existing, that was submitted to the state in 2006, we certainly want to make sure that all of the data that we are looking to compile for the district is compiled before the tenure to submit to the state in 2016. But I would certainly think that easily, within a six-month or smaller window, that data could be compiled and put together. We certainly want to make sure that we have all the stakeholders involved, so that we're putting together the most valuable and concise plan for the entire district.
So we were just saying, all right, let's go ahead with you. So within six months, we could have an end product that you would present to the public, to us, to the board, to this board, and to, in a public meeting.
One minute, I believe, so yes.
We're about to spend $250,000 on parking lots, asphalt paving. Some people don't consider that to be life safety, but my daughter keeps telling me that so many of her classmates fall down and break their ankles and their elbows and so forth. Is there anything in your five-year life safety plan that you could advise us that might take us in a little different direction when it comes to spending that kind of money on asphalt?
Well, paving certainly can be, paving in asphalt and concrete paving certainly is a life safety eligible item. It's just that if you're able to expend life safety funds, you cannot have any outstanding life safety amendments. And then there would also, so I don't believe there are any open outstanding life safety amendments.
What does that mean, amendment?
An amendment is a request to the state to spend life safety funding. You have to ask the state to spend life safety funds. You may be budgeting for life safety funds, but you cannot spend them until the state says you can. And that's where the amendment comes in. Hope you helped?
Yeah, that was helpful.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew, sorry.
Thank you.
Nice seeing you again. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And just so everyone knows, we didn't put the presentations on the public site in the Board Book until all the architects had an equal chance to present and share and ask questions, but they will be uploaded tomorrow for the public to view them.
Avna, do you know, who is the entity or the agency that is making that approval of our life safety plan? Is it the ISBE, or is it the who?
We'll have to go through West 41st.
West 41st.
Then we get final approval through ISBE.
Okay.
Do we, do we know if we have any of these amendments requested?
No, no, we'll have to, we'll have to look into it.
That he addressed.
Look into that.
So Concepts Three's life safety facilities plan is, is on the Norwich website that he mentioned, so it's available.
That he executed.
Yeah.
Right.
I'm sorry, David, could you repeat what you just said?
So on the Norwich School District 80 website, the Concept Three Facilities Assessment Plan is, is available.
So if you want to view it as an example, it's there.
Okay.
You have 10 minutes for the presentation and five minutes for questions and answers. I'll let you know, we have a minute, we have a minute.
Want to skip this slide?
I'm sorry?
And I'll just...
Hi.
Yes.
And they would like you to use the microphone, so that people can hear you.
Thank you. Terrific. Great.
Thank you so much for having Legged Architects. We're a team here to offer a fresh perspective on district architect. We are a team that is excited about serving you, and as we... Sorry, we're not advancing. Oh, stop time, yes. Thanks. Is this on for sure? That's it? Do you want to just go back?
Yeah. I just...
Use the spacebar? Well, you've seen our presentation.
That's all right. The words won't make it.
Just tap? Okay, terrific. All right, some technical difficulties, but we're ready to roll now. So we offer a fresh perspective on district architects for you. We want you to understand how we think, so we're going to be really brief so we can get to questions. But we put you at the center of everything we think about in terms of making decisions. We're a client-centered operation. We understand that you have a purpose, you have a mission statement. And what we want to do is help support you to turn that mission, that purpose into place as architects. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. I introduced Legged Architects, but my name is Robin Randall. I'm the Director of the K-12 Practice at Legged Architects. I have 26 years' experience supporting schools just like you, understanding what your priorities are, and then making that and embodying that in architecture. And as I said, we want to put you at the center of any conversation. We come with the agenda of putting you at the center, not with an agenda for designing something that is not purposeful to you. With that, we are celebrating our 50th year in practice, and we have formed many relationships during that practice. We customize our process around you. So what we'd recommend, as you think about your five-year facilities plan, is that you look at a process that will also support your curriculum. So any support that we give your facility, we would look at supporting your curriculum, too. So gathering that information on the five-step process here, we would gather the information, understand what your previous facility study was, and then apply that, correct it where it needs to be altered, understand the budget behind that, and then gather that information. And then we'd like to do a visioning session, so we understand what your vision for the next steps, for the next one-year, two-year, five-year, and then define what that concept would be. Consider what the options are, and prioritize those, the pros and cons, and then figure out what is the best solution to transform your purpose into place. We're a hands-on community organization. The bottom image is us working on together in a collaborative way with a district and flipping a classroom. So we like to get into the community and help the community, support you, and do volunteer work in your district. So building those relationships is important. And I'm having trouble tapping, but I've got it now, too. Thanks, Rob.
Thank you, Robin. I'm Rob Roebel with Legged Architects, obviously. I've been practicing for 23 years, and 21 years with Legged Architects, and almost exclusively in K-12. So Robin and I have worked very well together. And what she brings in terms of expertise is in the planning and the visioning. I'm more on the application end, so taking that vision and that, and turning that into reality. So my role with District 96 would be as project manager. So that means I'm the facilitator, who's working with you, with your administration, with your staff, to prioritize the projects, bring in the team. We'll have a team of architects. Nathan Belizari, who's going to talk in a minute, is one of the key players that will be on our team. But my role is really about communication, and whether that's with the architects on our team, or the consultants that we bring in, or with you, and especially your stakeholders. As Robin mentioned, we really believe in a collaborative process, and that means engaging everyone who's involved in the process. everyone who's involved in the process and getting input. Input can come from the craziest places, your staff and your, you know, you know your buildings better than we, so we want to get your ideas and understand those. And as we talk about the five-year process, the five-year life safety plan, you know, the state requires an inspection and the report be filed every 10 years, but we think the five-year plan is a really good way to go because 10 years apart is kind of a long time. So we believe that in, you know, reviewing your facilities and doing a facility assessment every five years is a really good way to go, especially with, with older buildings. They have a lot of nooks and crannies and, and, you know, staying on top of building envelope issues and caulking and windows and roofing, those are the types of things when you're wanting to protect the investment. You don't want to wait too long to find out that there might be a leak in a roof or a pipe that's, needs addressing. So we really believe that, that process is, is important. But we also, like, as Robyn mentioned, is we want to be envisioning or understanding your vision for how those spaces could be transformed. So if there is a classroom, say a science classroom, that needs some life safety work, maybe there's a gas line or some casework that needs to be replaced, you know, how can we go one step further and really make that a state-of-the-art 21st century lab? So that's why we, the collaborative process is so important to us, because maybe we can do more than just a five-year survey or a 10-year life safety survey and identify those code or ADA issues. What more can we bring to the table to get the learning environments to the next level? So in this photograph, we have some historic photographs, and that's one of the things we know about your district is there's some old buildings here. And there's some photographs, we work with Glenbard West High School in Glen Island and Proviso High Schools in Maywood and Oak Park River Forest High School in Oak Park. And what those buildings have in common with yours is they're 80 to 100 years old. So we have experience working with older buildings and understanding what the state looks for in terms of, you know, identifying the building code issues or the ADA challenges. But it's also about identifying, understanding how the buildings were built and identifying and being prepared for unforeseen conditions moving forward as you're, as you're thinking about renovations or, or different projects through your buildings. I know you've done a lot of that work already, but it's definitely something we want to be cognizant of as we think about new projects. So, and finally, the word relationship. We're architects. We like to shape the environment, design award-winning buildings, but at Legged Architects, we believe that the relationship is just as important. One of our first clients is the Mondeline School District. As Robyn mentioned, we're a 50-year-old firm. We've had that client for 49 years. Some of the clients I've worked with, I've worked with for 10 to 15 years. So relationship is very important. We're not here to just do one project and get out. We really want to be an advisor, trusted advisor, if you will, to you and work with you and forge a long-term relationship. We really want to be a part of the Riverside community. Nathan?
Thanks, Rob. Good evening. My name is Nathan Pelozzari, and I'm currently in my fifth year with Legged Architects. And I'm going to be helping Rob pretty much with the day-to-day tasks and pretty much anything he really needs. I'm going to be his right-hand man, trying to get meeting deadlines and performing construction documents on time. I'm going to be his go-to guy. And during my five years at Legged Architects, I primarily worked with K through 12 districts, so I know the environment that K through 12 districts have. And Legged Architects currently has five offices in the Chicagoland area, and one of those offices is actually just to the west of here. And it's located in Oak Brook, Illinois, so it's just seven miles to the west. And a simple drive down 31st, north up York, north, excuse me, north up York Road and then west on Sirmack is pretty much how you get there. And I'm currently a resident in Riverside, so that's pretty much my daily commute. As you can see on the map, we have the five schools identified, and that sixth dot in the top right-hand corner is currently where I reside. So I know the community, I've been in the community for about 10 years, I know the culture, and I'm a local person, so use me as your reference, as your guide. And that's very important to understand and to know, but also, what's also important is to make sure the community is aware of the decisions that we're making along the way and making sure that they're involved. And that's where I really feel that Legged Architects excels, because Legged Architects organizes and puts together community sessions so that community members and stakeholders have the opportunity to voice their opinions and they know what decisions are going to be made. And so we really pride ourselves on that. And some of those things and some of the deliverables that we bring to these sessions are 3D computer models. And as you can see in the image right below the map, is a image of a 3D model. And this helps convey our ideas and our thoughts to you, the client, so you understand what materials you're getting, where walls are being placed, and possibly even design options that we can come up with. So there's an array of things that we can achieve with this tool, and we think it's very valuable for us to convey to you. So with that, I'd like to open up with any questions.
I have one. How does the 3D model help us within, with the life safety study? How would you apply that tool?
I don't think, initially with the survey, it, it may not, but as we talk about visioning, as I, as I mentioned earlier, we're thinking about transforming a space into something else. It's a great tool for communicating. We realize that not everybody can read a blueprint or a drawing, so any way that we can find or improve a means of communicating to you or your constituents, we just want to tell you that that's, that we have those tools available that we can make available.
No, it would be, it is a good tool and it would help.
Robyn, I see you've written quite a bit on outside learning environments?
Yes.
And it just so happens, we're talking about repaving parking lots at $250,000, and our parking lots also serve as our playgrounds.
Terrific.
And, yeah, not so terrific. But anyway, this whole idea of visioning, that you talk about transforming a space to do more with it, I, I would like you to reflect on that a little bit.
Sure. Thank you for that opportunity. So we know that there's data, there's research-based design support that shows that children actually learn better, we all learn better outside, because all of our senses are naturally turned on and we can focus better. Our attention span actually elongates. So finding opportunities, and that would come from really you, how do you deliver your outdoor learning? If you don't have a curriculum that's going to support it, it's not going to get used. So finding opportunities so that you can interact with the outdoors and turn it into a learning environment would be something we brainstorm with you, we'd bring examples to you, we'd work with a landscape architect and a civil engineer to develop how potentially we could develop a place for collecting water perhaps, or a place that would develop into a shaded area, especially in the hot climate that we sometimes see in September and October, right? So looking for opportunities to learn, but finding out how we can support your curriculum would be critical and save you money, hopefully. That's the goal. I mean, we'd, we'd set a budget and figure out how we could work to that budget.
Excellent.
Do you guys have a sample life safety plan of that you've done for other clients that we could look at online or have time?
Sure. Yeah, we could, Zach will, will offer that to you tomorrow. We'd be happy to share that with you.
It's something that is actually posted, that would be, that's the public document that your client has posted for their community.
Sure. Yeah. We've done it for Oak Park River Forest and Proviso, we could get you those too.
Yeah, we recently completed a facility assessment for Central Castle District 66 and Darian.
Okay.
And that would be a great example. So what we did is we, it was a full facility assessment, so not only code issues were identified, but we looked at mechanical, electrical equipment, roofing, walls, the interior condition, and we actually used iPads to collect a lot of data that we presented to them and then organized in Excel spreadsheets and basically turned it into a living document that they could reevaluate every year and based on funding available that they could revisit their priorities and assign dollars if necessary, and then again, just, so they have a long-term idea of, of what their expenditures might be. So, yeah, it's a great example that we could share with you.
What's your expertise in building security, the latest state-of-the-art entry systems and cameras and alarms and all that?
Because we, well, we have, it's a very hot topic. It's very timely and it's a very complicated topic. And in our experience, we find that every school district has different priorities. So the first thing we would want to do is sit down with you and understand what your security needs are, what your perceptions are. We feel that the best engineers and consultants work for those types of firms, so we are an architect-only firm, but we work with several electrical engineers and security consultants that we could bring in that bring that expertise that we could share with you. But again, every solution, since in my experience, every solution for every school district is a little bit different, so that's why we want to understand more about what you're doing. But there's no doubt secure entry sequences and video surveillance and controlled access into the building is, is definitely on everybody's mind these days. So, yes, we can bring some ideas to you. Thank you.
Could you describe the process that you would take to get up to speed with, you know, our particular facilities, especially since we have had renovations over the last couple of years? Can you tell me what that process would look like?
And the expected timeline in that, of that process?
I guess that my first question would be to understanding what the deliverable is and what the intent is. Are we talking about a 10-year safety survey? And my understanding is that yours is up in 2015 or 2016, so it's something that's in the near term. But a facility assessment versus what the state requires, there's a little bit, you know, difference in that. But for us, it starts with a walkthrough, so we want to understand your facilities as quickly as we can. So any documentation that we have, you have, if we can view the existing building drawings or, or the drawings from the renovations, that would be important. But walking the buildings and seeing for ourselves the quality of the spaces, and what I've seen of the walkthroughs already that we were able to attend a few weeks ago, the buildings are in great shape, the exteriors look good, the interiors look nice. I'm sure there's always things that could be improved and there's always things we need to be looking for, again, to protect the investment, but it would definitely start with a walkthrough. So we'd like to spend some time in each building and get, and see the drawings. We have a good working relationship with AMSCO Engineering, and they were the engineer that did the mechanical, electrical plumbing work for your renovations. So we would sit down with them to understand what their priorities were and the types of tasks that they completed when they were, or are working in the district. So I think initially for us to get up to speed might be a couple of week process, but then again, I'd like to understand what, what you want to get out of that before commit to a final timeline, you know, what's the builder we'd like to see back.
I'm sorry, time, time is up. We have allowed the same amount of time for each firm, so.
Okay.
We can't just keep going for another.
Fair enough.
Talking too long.
Thank you very much.
Feed to Zach.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for your time.
So if there's, if there's any questions that anybody did not answer, feed those to Zach and then we'll have those communicated back to us from you guys.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Rose, if I could suggest that with each one of these, that we try to keep our questions pretty similar so that we can do a comparative test?
That's it.
You know, so definitely ask your ADA accessibility, entry, security kind of questions, if you want to, so we can kind of compare them at the end. How about the answers?
That'd be.
That's no fun.
Hello? Hello? Welcome.
You have us. You have 10 minutes for the presentation and 5 minutes for forward. Your name?
And the microphone is there for your use, please?
Yeah.
I'd like to sing a song for you. Am I in? I'm not live.
It's recording.
It's recording. I'm sorry. Well, thank you for having us here. My name is Mark Joliker. I am a principal at Perkins &amp; Will. I've been with Perkins &amp; Will 25 years. I am 30 years in the industry, so I have a lot of background and experience. I've been focused on educational projects for over 20 years. And with me is?
Hi, I'm Amy Ekman. I'm an Associate Principal at Perkins &amp; Will, and I've been there for 15 years working with Mark and Rick, and I focus on programming and planning educational facilities.
And I'm Rick Young. I've been in the industry 10 years, been with Perkins &amp; Will eight, mainly focusing on education. I am a project architect as well as project manager. I would be serving as your main point of contact during projects.
Well, thank you so much. With 10 minutes, we arranged our presentation with the. Top 10 reasons to hire Perkins &amp; Will. So we'll take you through, it's a nice organizational tour, tool, but number one is team. Everything about who you're looking for and you want to be looking for is about the team of people that you're going to be hiring. And we bring with myself, Amy and Rick, a well-seasoned team that covers, as a three-legged stool, different aspects of what you need, from principal leadership, like myself, to the educational adequacy leadership from Amy Ekman, and the day-to-day project management experience from Rick Young. Legacy is a large aspect of Perkins &amp; Will. We started as a practice in 1935 doing schools, elementary schools, and we have a school here, as you're aware of, Blythe Park Elementary, we're very proud of, and I brought one of the books along just because we're, we're kind of geeky and giddy about publications that I've done over the years, and the Blythe Park is in here in about six locations, which if I had time, I'd share with you. What's interesting, on the bottom right, the trivia, 1948, that Blythe Park Elementary School cost a little over $14 a square foot. So wouldn't that be nice if you had a school that costs that much today?
I don't know if I'd want to be in it.
It would cover, it would probably cover your electrical right now per square foot. Some interior shots, we're showing this primarily because the residential humanist and student quality of the spaces that were pioneered by Perkins &amp; Will, and we believe is very much evident in the type of work that we do today. We believe that the type of work we do as architects is making the facilities good teaching tools. Lot of abundant natural daylight. We're a focused K-12 practice. We do have the depth and resources of a larger practice, but Amy, Rick and I operate within a very focused educational group. It allows us to know the local marketplace, the general contractors, CMs, and lets us know about working with other districts like yourself and what we're seeing happening in the marketplace. We bring with that regional, national, and international understanding of what's happening with education and pedagogy. Research. We look at what we bring to you as something more than architects doing studies, drawings and things like that. We look at buildings as, as a tool for education, and the research behind that we think is a driving force to make the schools better for your students. We've been doing that over the decades. That includes a number of books and publications. I shared with you one of those, and Amy will share with you one later in the presentation. Sustainability. This is not something that's a fad for us. It's something we look at really is more about high-performance buildings. We look at each and every aspect of projects, whether we're doing a new building or working with a district like yours that has existing facilities. Everything we do is about tailoring the needs of a school or a facility with what's appropriate for the clients, the district. We also look and balance that and bring to you what that means on your return on investment. Gives you a lot of decisions to make as a school board.
And part of that tailoring process is our project management approach. First and foremost, we listen. You know, we want to listen to what your needs are as a specific school district. And in listening, we identify clear goals at the beginning of each particular project and long-term goals for your district as a whole. And one of the slides we have up here is a very detailed scheduling timeline, and this was for a very complex project that had a very short time schedule but had a lot of components moving, a lot of phases. And so we take the time and effort to clearly identify all those goals so that we can make sure we're in lockstep, hitting those milestones. So in addition to handling the scope and the budget, we also have to obviously we also have to obviously take care, or scope in the schedule, obviously keep to the project budget. And one of the key tools we do with this is, as with the schedule, constantly revisiting and making sure we're hitting those milestones, making sure we're hitting the milestones on the budget and revisiting it and checking it as we go through the project. One key tool we like to use, depending on the size of the project, is bringing in a third-party cost consultant. So this allows us to not only check, say, a construction manager's cost estimates, but also check our own design, make sure we're keeping on task and maintaining that budget. So obviously, one of the key issues, reasons we're here today, is health and life safety surveys for public schools. Up here, you see a number of districts we work with in doing either producing those life safety surveys or also in addressing the violations over the time period. So the critical issues with a health and life safety survey is first and foremost, understand the existing facilities. You need to have a good understanding in order to do a very in-depth and thorough onsite inspection and identification of those violations. Once you've identified them, architects change. You have to be very clear in how you identify them, what the issue is and what the resolution is. And in addition to those, we also provide cost estimates and priorities so that you, as a district, can prioritize how you want to address those violations over the five-year time period that you have in order to do so.
So switching gears a little bit. As I said, I do programming and planning for educational facilities across the country. So I'm bringing to you a little bit of discussion on possibly engaging community, if that ever becomes something that you need. We do a lot of workshops for master planning, for renovations, just any needs that you have, just engaging stakeholders, teachers, students, whomever you'd want to engage. And we want to make sure it's participatory, we want to make sure it's consensus building. One example is on the lower right-hand corner, which is called a nature explorer classroom. It was an addition to a school in Peoria, District 150, where we worked with the Arbor Day Foundation and the community in designing an outdoor classroom for elementary pre-K through 12 students, actually. Now, which button?
Down there.
I wish I was a mat girl. So what we wanted to learn about is today's students. This is actually a great research piece. Mark mentioned, we do a lot of research. This was done in our office. Excuse me, it talks about basically what our student is and the type of spaces we want to design. And this is basically a global view at that. So we want to leave this with you guys today. Anyway, so we want to teach our students creativity and innovation and the ability to work in teams and work across disciplines. And we want to design the right type of spaces for that. So this is actually a retrofit media center that shows flexibility. It shows different types of sizes, different types of technology, and students collaborating and working in groups, which is what we want to see in our 21st century learning environment.
And with that, the 10th reason is our commitment to you. It's bringing, with our commitments, that we promise the continuity of a team. It's how we work. I will be here, Rick will be here with you from now through all of your projects. And that's, you can call all our references, that is how we work. Our sustainability and our knowledge. And we are here for you for whatever you need for your facilities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions and answers?
And Project Deliverable is a five-year life safety plan. What should we expect in terms of budgeting for timeframe from start to finish?
You have the two schools here, the facility, and then you have the Blythe Park Elementary. I think it's reasonable to do that within about a two- to three-month timeframe.
We also have two additional schools. We have five schools total.
Five schools total.
Five schools total, right, yeah.
So three months?
Yeah.
And we're ready to present to the, you're ready to present to the board and to the public?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mark, you usually do the walkthroughs, and then we start doing the documentation. And then after that, I will say, then it goes into the computer system to the state. After you've received it and decided you're ready to have an input.
The security analysis, that's something that we have ready to go or that we need an architect to help us with. We have some gaps in our building security, you know, entries and cameras and all of those technology. And we would be looking for the architect to help us. What's your expertise there?
We've done a number of projects. Rick and I in particular have worked, and we've done security entry projects at Lyle, District 202. We've done that at Hinsdale, District 86. We've done them at Lake Forest District Elementary Schools. Just done, completed two security entries in District 115. We look at the flow and the entry into the facility, the access. There's two kinds of security. One is passive security. Eye line invisibility is paramount in security, however we can achieve it. The second is the cameras and things like that. But with that is creating what we believe are secure vestibules so that after students are led into the building, anyone else coming in cannot continue into the facility itself. It has to go into and administer a office, if the building can possibly be adapted.
And would that now include more than just the main entrances? Would they include all exit points, potential exit points?
Typically not. Typically, what I just described is for the primary points of ingress for the public. Generally, if I, it all depends on the school, of course. If you're bringing students, for example, in the backside of a building from buses and then the front side by cars, the way you're doing it with the buses would be a different way of security. Because as soon as they come in, you can go into lockdown with those doors. But the public would still be coming in your main doors, the school itself. Is that, did I address the question? I think so. Pretty much.
And then similarly, with regards to, how about for ADA accessibility and energy efficiency? I know you talked about sustainability.
Yeah, ADA is something that we spend a lot of time with. A project we're currently doing in District 115, we have a school with 47 different levels that we're dealing with. It's considered a four-story building, but there are 47 levels, meaning 47 levels that are barriers to access to an individual. You might recall, you have a few locations in the facility within your district where you have to go up, to go across, to go down, to turn right, to turn left, to go down, to go up. You know, it's no fault of yours. This is what happens with buildings that have grown over a period of time. It's part of the challenge we have is solving for you ways to deal with those ADA aspects.
Do you think you could help us save some money, utilities, in some of these old buildings that we have?
Absolutely. One of the things that Rick does a very good job of, along with myself, but with our engineers, is doing a building, sort of a life cycle analysis, looking at your building systems, looking at how they're used, are they tuned properly and calibrated properly? And also looking at how you're utilizing your buildings. The number one way to start saving energy are habits. Habits are formed and habits can be shaped and changed. So it's the utilization of energy is something that we all have a control in, to a certain degree.
Could you also supply an example of a life, health, life safety that you've completed that we could look at? I don't know if there's a website, you know, another district that you...
We could send it.
Yeah.
We'd gladly send it.
To Zach. Is that good?
Yeah.
I'd be looking for the document that we would be posting as well to the public. That makes, you know, to let them know, to let our community know what's our plan, what's the state of our buildings.
Sure, we would provide a spreadsheet for what would be input to the state. States turn it electronic.
So if you can send, I mean, if it's posted on a place that you've already done it?
An example?
Yeah, at some other district, just send along the link to Zach.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Microphone? If you could.
I love microphones.
Well, it's just recording.
Oh, okay, so you don't hear me out?
Well, you can watch yourself.
You can watch yourself.
I'll watch myself later, that's, actually, I probably won't, I might share.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ron McGrath, and we're the team from Tria Architecture. To start with, I want to let you know that we have a slight change to our presentation tonight. Jim Petracos, who has been the main contact throughout the RFQ process, came down yesterday morning. And Susan Reed, who's our project architect for the district, came down sick this morning. So through a wave of unfortunate bad luck, both of them aren't going to be able to be here tonight. And I did check both of them, they are sick, it wasn't a personal one.
You guys are healthy, though, right?
Yeah, okay. So, yeah, we're all good. We'll keep our distance just to be safe. At least nobody has to use the microphone after us, I hope. So, but we do have Tom Zergat, who is one of the principals of Tria Architecture and will be the project manager for the district. Christine Gould, who is our interior designer, and myself. I am Ron McGrath. I am also one of the principals of Tria Architecture, and I am our life safety specialist. So before the project team has a chance to tell you a little bit about themselves and what they do, I'm going to give you a little background on Tria, the firm. So Tria Architecture was established in 2004 as a really service-oriented architectural firm. So we're happy to say that we're celebrating our 10-year anniversary this year, which is very exciting for us. And we designed Tria to be a mid-size architectural firm. So what that means for you, for the district, is that we're a big enough firm that we have the knowledge, ability, experience to be able to handle projects in excess of $20 million. But we're also small enough that we can provide the high level of service that all of our clients expect in projects as small as $10,000 or $20,000. So that there's really no project that's too big or too small for us. Where some of the larger firms may have issues with working with smaller projects, this mid-size firm can handle projects of any size. So as I said, Jim Petracos isn't here tonight, but he will be your client liaison. What that really means is that he's going to be the person who's going to work with the district on a lot of the front-end information, contracts, insurance, legal questions, courting with your attorneys, those kinds of things. As well as he's also going to be checking in with all of our clients regularly to make sure that they're happy with the services that we're providing, if there's anything more that we could be doing for them. So being a service-oriented architectural firm means that we have to be able to provide our client with a full, broad range of different services. So we're able to provide life safety survey, facility analysis, envelope analysis, master planning, cost estimating, referendum assistance, construction observation, basically the full gamut of types of projects and services he could possibly want. So one of the things that a lot of districts and a lot of public agents ask about is grant writing. We do have experience with grant writing. Tria really takes a proactive approach to grant writing. What that means is that instead of just looking for grants for a specific client, we keep an eye on continuously all the grants that come out and try to resurface in them as much as we can so that when we come across a grant that fits a particular client or a particular group of clients, we'll bring those grants to them. Because there's a lot of times that districts or municipalities or other clients have products that they haven't told us about yet. So by bringing them all the grants that they may qualify for, gives them the opportunity to see what things they have that will apply funds to products that they may have. And of course, once we bring a grant to a client and they want to use it or they want to go for it, we assist them in the application for the grant and all the information involved. And of course, in administering the grant throughout the process with follow-up information as required. Now, with all the different services that we can provide, being a mid-size firm also allows us to tailor our services to a particular client or even a particular project. So on a larger project, you may want more services. You may want, you may need help with the planning phases in the early phases of a project. You may want additional construction observation because of the size and complexity of a project. But then on smaller projects, you may not need, you may only need very little amount of time or service from us in the design phases. And you may not even want us to be out during construction. Or you may want us only at, you know, regular periods or shorter periods. So we can tailor our services, and we can even tailor it down to assisting you with in-house projects, whether it be giving you sketches so that your staff can do work, or just making sure that something that you're going to do meets code or helping you with furniture layouts, things like that. And by tailoring our services, we can also then tailor our fees to what those projects need to be. And that's a big benefit of being a mid-size firm is that we have that flexibility in not only services but in fees. So and Tria likes to be able to select the right team, the right people, the right team for every project and every client. So you'll meet our in-house team, or at least the ones that are not sick, tonight. But then we also have external team, which usually consists of a different group of engineers. Then we basically have a pool of engineers that we choose from. And we choose the engineer based on the client, based on the project, based on the complexity of the project. We have different engineers that have different specialties and are able to accommodate different types of projects. So we can pick the engineer that fits best for what the needs are. And in this case, for District 96, we also have a historic preservation consultant as part of our team. We know that Riverside, obviously, is a national historic district. I also know that, I believe, it's central in Blythe Schools, our local Riverside landmark designations. So we know that we have to be very cautious about work that's done within those buildings and within the district to make sure that we're not violating any of the historic character, historic regulations of the laws. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the project team, who's going to tell you some more about what they do.
Good evening, everyone. As Ron said, my name is Tom Zergat. I'm one of the principals and owners of Tria Architecture as well, and also be the project manager for the school district. So with that, I want to kind of go over an overview of what the project manager's role is, what's my role as, you know, with the client and with our team. So basically, just, you know, the center point of dealing with the school board, the principals, the buildings and grounds, and also working in conjunction with all the consultants, as Ron mentioned. So it's kind of a quarterback of all the services. So that would be your main point of contact. So with that, the big picture, one thing I like to do is just really have all the information kind of gathered. So with these charts we do, it's really, you know, it's a life safety report, but it's also could be a facility report. It's gathering all the information, looking at the schools, listening to the staff, as you know, as far as wants, needs of the buildings and life safety requirements, anything that's required for the projects. We want to kind of come up with a comprehensive plan or a spreadsheet so we can understand what's... so we can understand what do the buildings need. By doing this, we can allow, you know, groupings and understand which buildings need some more or less priorities and other aspects of that. With the life safety report, we would meet with the facility, walk down all the individual rooms and areas and understand the buildings, and really meet with all the key stakeholders to really understand the buildings. Also, there's also a new format right now with the IOWAs. They just had an update recently in the last month or so. So, we're actually working on two life safety reports currently for two other school districts. So, we're really in tune with the new format. It's basically an electronic format, and again, just have a lot of experience doing these new reports. So, with the information that we gather by, you know, listening to staff and the end-users, my role again is just the scheduling then, you know. What projects can we group together? If there's some life safety parts that need to be done, or have been identified, or if there's a project in a certain area that we need to do, we want to group that stuff together to say, "Okay, if we're going to renovate a room, let's find all the life safety requirements that need to be done and do it all at one time." So, we don't have to fix up that classroom or space more than one time. And then prioritizing the schedules, you know, what can we push forward? What needs to be a priority? What can we do over winter break, or summer break, or do in the evenings, you know, after hours? So, just always working with the big picture as far as how to get everything done. And that leads right into tracking. So, also, our role is to track everything so that, you know, the business manager or the Board of Education wants to know where we are to date with all the construction spending and kind of just gives you a comprehensive overview of the whole project and where we're at to date. So, that's my role, is really, you know, quarterback with the school board and administration and all of our consultants to really kind of put it all together.
One minute.
So, very quickly, with Susan not being here, just want to go over a couple of case studies. Actually, I'm going to skip this one, go here. This is a good case study I want to highlight, is a historical building we worked on. The client asked us to do energy-efficient windows. So, we took this upon ourselves to say, "Let's do a little bit more." And we actually looked at the yearbooks and found out the building was from 1899, and took some aspects of this original building, which was very beautiful, to, you know, to make a more unique project. Instead of just being energy-efficient windows, we actually kind of went back and made it historical and really brought the beautification of the building, and really, we're proud of this job. Just an example of our work. So, Christine?
See how many words I can get out? And stop me in any time. I'm Christine Gould, Tria's interior designer, and obviously, if it's something like a life safety survey, then I probably wouldn't be too involved in the project. But if there was something more aesthetic, then I would be working closely with you and your team. And, do I have a minute to go on?
You have about 10 seconds.
I'll flip to the after. There we go. I was going to share a recent project with you, but this was a high school cafeteria renovation that we recently completed.
Flip to the auditorium.
The auditorium here, that's what I do. This is a before of an auditorium project that was kind of kick-started because of some life safety issues that then is an after, the district really took advantage, has an opportunity to modernize the entire facility.
And they get more seats in it? Looks like there's more.
They actually less, because they had ADA compliance. We actually lost some seats, but they had 1,600, we went down to 1,500. More than enough. One second, sorry.
Kick it off. You kind of walked us through how you would go through a process, listening to staff, doing walkthroughs, setting priorities. So, for us, what should we budget for like a timeframe? In terms of from start to finish, how long should this, how long do you think the whole process would take?
Are you talking about like a life safety project?
Yeah, for this deliverable here, it's five-year life safety.
Actually, I'm going to head back over. Yeah, when you talk life safety-specific, the survey itself, depending on whether or not we can schedule it during a time when kids aren't in school, because that's the best time to do a survey, is when we can have access to the whole building. So, usually try to do it over Christmas break, spring break, summer break. If that's not feasible, we can work out something either to do it in evenings or weekends, or we can do it during the day, but it's very difficult to obviously get into classrooms when students are using, we don't want to be a disruption, obviously, to the learning process because that's why they're here. But we use, the survey itself takes a few days. The creation of the supporting documents can take, depending on what information you have available to us, if there's a lot of head drunks, things like that, can take one to two weeks on average. Sometimes a little bit more, depending again how many items we come across and what we come up with. And then once we get the documents, and like Tom said, we put together a spreadsheet before we start entering into anything into the IOWA system. Because we want to sit down with, usually with the superintendent, business manager, buildings and grounds people, and go over the items that we found. Because a lot of times, there's items that come up on life safety surveys that are temporary. Because of the nature of being able to do them while school is not in session, a lot of times we'll find storage in corridors, or in vestibules, or furniture that's moved to blocks, doorways, and things like that, that we have to list down. But as long as you can, you know, the district can tell me that, "No, that's just not normal," then I can take them off. So, we don't want to report things that aren't actual violations if they're just temporary situations when our kids are gone. So, usually that, you know, that takes a couple hours to meet with the staff. We make the revisions, we submit to IOWAs. If we were hard-pressed, if we wanted to do it.
But you would be presenting to the board with a final, before you'd be sent in to IOWAs, right?
Right, no, we wouldn't, we could, we have in the past, but there's really no need for the board to have to sit through an entire, very dry discussion about life safety items or not. I hate to say it, it's one of my specialties, because it's not a very exciting thing to do. But overall, from start to finish, I mean, it can be done in as little as, I'd say, three to four weeks. Or depending on how many meetings scheduling goes. Now, I know that your last survey was in 2006, so you're not due until 2016 for your next 10-year survey. And the way, I've had districts who've always said, "Oh, let's just get it done a year early." I kind of always compare that to replacing a parking lot a year before it needs to be. You're not getting the full, all of your money's worth from the previous 10-year survey. So, there's really not a lot of reason to do it early unless you have life safety funding that you need, that you want to spend on certain projects. And that's really the only reason that I've ever come up with, with districts, is a reason to do it ahead of time. If you have things that you want to spend money on, life safety money, then you need the survey in order to be able to do that, in order to create the amendments, in order to spend life safety funds.
Yeah, as you know, our facilities have changed dramatically since 2006.
Right, yes.
So, that's what we're trying to survey, and then reassess, kind of reset.
Right, and it's not a bad idea to do it somewhat early. I probably wouldn't suggest you run out and hire somebody tomorrow, hire one of us tomorrow and start the survey and have it submitted in a month or two. Because then you're two years ahead of schedule. But hopefully, the parts that have changed, the additions and the renovations, it should be devoid of any violation or any life safety issues. They usually are every once in a while. Most life safety issues just come from maintenance that's happened over the years where doors have been replaced or paintings happen that violate some item in the code that really nobody knows exists except for architects. Now, is your question? Yes, thank you.
Do you work with any consultants regarding security audits or reviews as part of life safety?
Typically not as part of life safety. There are, we have worked with consultants on security issues and security design systems with schools before. But it's not typically part of the life safety survey because it's not technically a code requirement. There are requirements for school districts to do, oh, I'm sorry, it's late in the evening, so now my brain can't remember the actual code terminology. But there is actually a mandate that schools have to have plans in place and the practice for police events and emergencies of that nature. So, there are, there's sort of a little gray area in there, and we've had districts ask us to put some items under those issues on life safety reports so they could try to use life safety funding. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. But it is, there's some little gray areas like that in the life safety survey. And if it is an issue and a concern of the district's, it's certainly something we can look at. And the worst you can do is you put it on a life safety survey and you ask, and the state says, "No."
One minute.
My answer's for two lines, sorry.
How about energy efficiency for older schools like we have?
As far as requirements or just ability to?
Ability to upgrade.
Your best bet is to do it as you go along doing other things. When you need to replace the roof, let's make the roof more energy efficient, let's add more insulation. We can discuss, and there's lots of debates on the pros and cons of reflective white roofs, whether or not in our environment, our climate, they're actually beneficial or not. But there are, there's definitely no argument about whether additional insulation is good. You know, when we renovate, if we renovate classrooms or renovate interior spaces, we can look at adding additional insulation on the inside of walls in order to get a better thermal envelope on that. Replace windows, like Christine showed you, actually, the school where we replaced the windows. Their idea there was, actually, no, Tom said it, sorry, I'm forgetting which one said which. The school where we replaced the windows, it was, their idea was to get energy-efficient windows because their old windows were single-pane steel windows. We took it to the next level to be able to give them a historic, recapture that historic look, but it was definitely about getting the energy efficiency. So. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate the opportunity to meet with you all, and hopefully we'll see you again soon.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I guess, I guess if we have additional questions, we should route them to Lisa and Zach.
All right, take care. Thank you.
And then we'll route the answers back to the full board.
And then everybody's going to, we're going to have a link to or a copy of a life safety plan from everybody, right?
Correct.
We'll put the presentations on the website tomorrow, and then give the firms a due date to send them so we can have them all at once, and then send them out to you.
And then we're following up in August for discussion, right, at the August meeting.
Okay, that would be at the regular board meeting?
I think so.
Well, you and I can talk about that. All right. Great, thank you. Interesting. Our next item on our agenda is the minutes of the previous meetings for approval of minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of May 29th, the minutes of the closed session of May 29th, the minutes of the policy committee meeting of June 17th, the minutes of the regular business meeting of June 17th, the minutes of the closed session meeting of June 17th, the minutes of the special meeting of June 19th, and the minutes of the special meeting and the minutes of the closed session of July, both on July 1st.
Is it moved?
Second.
Randy Brockway?
Yes.
Lisa Gaynor?
Aye.
David Caddam?
Aye.
Grayson Morello?
Aye.
Michael O'Brien?
Aye.
Our secretary is not here, and Ms. Marido's manning. Aye. We have approved the minutes, thank you. Bob, now you're going to give us a, just an update on the guiding principles?
Sure, and the complete report can be found in the board packet under guiding principles. So, I'll give you an overview of our accomplishments this month. The performance evaluation Reform Act team, which is the PAT Action Team, met for the third time this summer to decide on the evaluation framework, define the teacher rating systems, and agreed upon expectations for meeting specific performance level. And then there's a follow-up meeting scheduled for early August. That team is led by Mr. Guerman, one of our principals, and Mrs. Gill, one of our certified staff members. The Division of English Language Learners, which is the Dell, as I shared with you in the past, completed their audit of our program a year ago, and gave us some areas of concerns that we were not in compliance with through the work of Dr. Gannon and one of the state-assigned consultants. He created a program design and scope and sequence for our transitional bilingual education program, as well as a program design for a transitional program of instruction, which is TPI, aligned the Spanish language arts standards to common core. And also, with our new professional development plan for next year, we'll be in compliance for professional development. That was another area that we were not in compliance with, so we'll be including some ELL strategies for all of our staff for next year. A complete letter, as well as the report and their findings, is in your packet. Personnel, we've been busy, principals, as well as Dr. Gannon and myself, screening and interviewing certified staff teachers, certified staff positions, as well as administrators. You'll see that we have completed, and you'll see tonight in your packet, six positions that were completed and asked for your approval. And then in the next coming weeks, we'll continue to do approximately eight more. For financial and operational excellence, the nurses' office relocation and addressing the ADA compliance issues, the award for, the bid construction was given to Anderson. That complete, like I said, the complete document is available online. The project was scheduled to begin last week, and they've given us a date to be completed by August 5th, so that will be ready for our students prior to the first day of school. The Hauser roof replacement was given to Ridgeway Roofing Company, the lowest responsive bidder, and that project will begin on July 18th, which is later this week, with a completion project date of August 12. The crossing guard costs, those are included in your packet, and we'll be discussing those as an action item, looking at, the villages asked us to meet what they currently sponsor and fund, which is 50% of the cost of our crossing guards. You heard tonight of our RFQ for a facilities review and a 10-year life safety plan, but the initial request was to do a facilities review from an updated architect. We received 10 statement of interest from the RFQ we placed in the paper two months ago. You heard from our four architects today. All questions and comments should be forwarded to Mrs. Gaynor and Mr. Sayad, and then we'll have those presentations, as well as examples of life safety, put on our website. The bid process for the paper and groceries will be, are also in your packet for approval. We have Bidland Paper was the lowest bid for our copier paper, and GFS was the only bid that we received for our groceries. Also attached in your packet is BY Building, the summer construction and maintenance reports, so the list of all the summer projects and start-to-finish times, as well as the cost of each of those projects. And for our rigorous communications, District 96, Facebook and Twitter, we will have a district Facebook and Twitter account. They've been set up, we're beginning, we'll be aligning it with the schools' sites as well, and looking to launch that in August for the start of school. And the district leadership team will begin to develop its 14, 15 action plans based on the guiding principles, and we look forward to presenting them at the August 19th board meeting.
Question on the PIRA Action Team, how many members are on this team?
I want to say eight. Am I correct on that, Dr. Gannon, or Mr. Guerman? About eight?
Yeah, we have eight.
There's probably about, I believe, five teachers and three administrators?
Yes.
And are they, when will be the next time that they meet?
Early August, I don't have the exact date, but probably the first.
After school begins?
Before.
No, before.
First week in August.
First week of August.
Okay.
Yeah, and we're getting down to actual, you know, creating actual documents for the new evaluation plan, so. August 4th.
How many times has the committee met just out of curiosity?
This will be our third meeting, Dr. Gannon, I think, August 4th will be our third meeting?
Yes, it's our third official meeting. We had one more unofficial meeting just to figure things out, how we're going to go through the process.
Okay. And, I don't think we, you and I have finished, sent me an email, and I haven't had a chance to respond, but about the action planning, we're going to try to meet, to discuss that maybe a little more depth before August 19th?
Sure.
What is that?
The action planning for the guiding principles.
Is that strategic plan or?
No, that's the guiding principles, our action plan that we're just wrapping up.
Okay.
Because Bobna said she's going to present it on August 19th.
She's going to present the updated ones for this, 2014, 15? Okay.
Yeah, so we'll try to flush that out maybe a little bit more and provide more.
And that's what's going to be presented on August 19th?
And provide more information before then.
On the nurses' relocation, you said it was scheduled to start last week? Did it actually start on time? Is it on schedule for August 5th?
They're still on schedule. They've done the assessment, and then you tear it out.
Okay. And then on the Facebook, Twitter, who owns that? Who's the, who's the responsible person for updating it, keeping it?
It'll come through the district office, so between right now, it's gonna be, I've set it up, so Brian and I have access to that right now.
So just, just you two will have the ability to post updates, whatever?
Right, and we'll probably designate that out to Sue, you know, Morehead and Donna McLachlan as well, since, you know, they work with us.
What kind of things, just out of curiosity, would we send out on Twitter?
Well, they would be the same, so whatever we put on Facebook, we would put on Twitter, but the Twitter ones would be limited to 140 characters or less. But like, some of the things that we've put out so far, maybe like registration dates, you know, picnics, spirit ware, and what are some other things that you guys have put out? Oh, I was thinking as a district, we would put out reminders for district-wide events, possibly even just board meetings, back to school line.
We have a communication guideline, right? That would, that we would just follow, right, from Facebook?
Okay, so the, so that guideline already exists about what would go on them, okay.
It includes Twitter as well?
So, I mean, can you give an example of what you might put out on a Facebook or Twitter page? I mean, class projects?
Reminders for parents about, just simple things, reminders for parents about days off, about short days, about, you know, as things come up that after a long break they're coming back, reminders to come back to school. Simple things that you would think would be logical, but during the course of the year in the chaos of home, they get forgotten very easily. There's a lot of what we did last year, but it led parents, a lot of thank yous for the reminders to us, that were just simple things. And the pages are linked back and forth, so when you post on Facebook, it posts to the Twitter, but there's a link to it, so it actually will link you back to the full text that you would've gotten from the Facebook feed. So whether a parent signs up one or the other, they're gonna get the identical information, just look a little bit different.
Okay, thank you.
We celebrate academics as well, so the teachers assign us things, the thought science lessons that they're doing, some meet activities that they did, Mother's Day event that they may have had, you know, moms in, you know, the first graders, and they'll send us a little word with a picture we posted up there.
I'll bet you the reminders are very helpful to people. Alright, thank you.
Can I ask a quick, do an update on kindergarten enrollment? As of now, I mean, like?
Just whatever we have, so right here, I'm looking at the student assignment class distribution. So it was, no, I'm sorry, that's not new, that's not new kindergarten.
I'm just wondering, I mean, because at some point, if there's issues, there'll be a class, we'll have to deal with the class size, and so I'm just wondering where we stand.
I can send that to you tomorrow, Lisa, I'll send it to the whole board.
Yeah, that's gotta be, we gotta deal with it on the August meeting now.
Yes, and if we do, since we are meeting on August 5th, we might be able to have some discussions because I've already gotten some requests from people about attending and who to write letters to if they're not able to get into their home school. So I know we're at capacity with what we overrode last year.
So that's not kindergarten, that's other grade levels.
Is this like an agenda for the August 5th meeting?
No, you know, right now we have it on for August 19th. I'm just thinking if we wanna look at the numbers sooner, August 5th might be the time, but.
It's filling up.
It's always something.
Yeah, it's filling up, okay. Alright, let me, let me make a note. Alright, the school board committees, Art isn't here, so we'll bypass education, we haven't met anyway recently, finance?
Finance met this evening and we received a presentation from Mr. Zayed about the 2014 budget, and he presented a series of management reports that were developed and there's some feedback that's come from them that we'll need to update those reports and bring them back with some changes. So, and the next finance committee meeting is tentatively scheduled for the first week in August.
Thank you, David, Policy Committee?
We haven't met since our, we haven't met since the, our last board meeting. So I don't have any update except to say that our next Policy Committee meeting will be on August 19th.
Parent Teacher Advisory Committee, any?
Have not met, but the first reading of the discipline code handbook is on the agenda for later.
Alright, thank you. Bill? Is this your first meeting?
My first official.
Your first, yeah, I mean, reporting to us.
Yes.
Thank you, welcome.
Thanks. I'd just like to say that the members of the RAC are anxiously awaiting information about the recall of peer professionals for this upcoming school year. It's something that is definitely on the minds of a lot of, especially the peer professionals who are looking to be rehired, so just like you to know that we're anxiously awaiting that information. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Bill. Financial information items, our invoice and spending report, any comments or questions on the information in the packets? Do you wanna make any comments on it?
The only thing I wanna go over is some of the current and anticipated expenditures. For the current expenditures, you'll see concept, concept reads, plan design for the nurse's office, which is $2,000. The design for the roofing project, which is a partial payment of $9,180. The remaining $3,000 should be coming in when the job's complete. We have Pearson, their annual power school hosting support fee, $30,672. And the specialty floors, which completed the resurface of the gym floors of both Hollywood and Blythe, are 14 by 50. And I discussed this during the budget presentation. Landscaping, residing baseball field behind Hauser, $9,000 square feet, that's going to be $7,200. And I'll look at the cost of doing an entire field, you know, move forward with that.
Zach, did you get some competitive bids on the field?
No, there are landscaped, they gave us a pretty, pretty good price for.
So you think you could chew them down if you got some competitive, even if your intent was to go with them?
Sure, I did.
Might be worth a shot. And is the gyms at Blythe and Hollywood complete?
Yes, they are.
Alright, any other questions or comments on the financial statements? Alright, then may I have a motion to approve of the general invoices, Schedule A 747 of the payable pre-list? May? Somebody want a second?
Second.
Randy Brockway?
Aye.
David Cadama?
Aye.
Lisa Gayner?
Aye.
Rachel Morella?
Aye.
Michael O'Brien?
Aye.
And Ms. Mary Rose Mandia?
Aye. We have approved the payable pre-list, Schedule A 747, as presented. The next item on our agenda is the Regional Safe Schools Program, the Intergovernmental Agreement. Bobna, do you mind updating us, we talked about this last month, but just up reminding us what this entails?
Sure, this is an annual agreement that we have with West Forty, which is our educational consortium. So if students are unable to attend school due to disciplinary reasons or safe, to keep them safe, if they've been truant or if they've been expelled, West Forty offers a co-op and they can attend one of the West Forty schools for our annual tuition fee. So the agreement is in your packet.
Have we, have we utilized this service in the past?
I believe we have, we have not this past year, but we have in the past and I can get that exact information for you.
If there are no further questions, I would like a motion to move that the Board of Ed accept the Regional Safe Schools Program, the Intergovernmental Agreement, for the 2014-2015 school year as presented.
Is it moved?
Second.
Michael O'Brien?
Aye.
Rachel Morella?
Aye.
David Cadama?
Aye.
Lisa Gayner? Randy Brockway?
Aye.
Mary Rose Mandia?
Aye. Regional Safe Schools Program, Intergovernmental Agreement is approved. Next item is our copy paper, the acceptance of the bid from the Midland Paper Company, who is our lowest bid. Any questions on that? Looks like our bid was...
Is the red what we're paying this year?
Yeah, the 24?
Is based on paying the invoice within the terms.
Okay, is that what, so that would be 24.50 per case and $34 per case, depending on the size of the paper?
Correct.
It's the lower number though, is it? Isn't it the number in red?
Oh, I'm sorry, I read the high one.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, the number in red is.
Yeah.
It's 24.55, sorry, 24, 25 per case for eight and a half by 11 and 33.66 per case for the eight and a half by 14.
Yeah, I print in black and white, so, but yeah, those are the lower numbers.
Yes, sorry.
Are those comparable to, to that, what we received last year?
Yes.
Was there, I mean, is it a price increase or just flat?
Very little, very little.
Okay, small increase. Alright, may I have a motion that the Board of Education accept the bid from Midland Paper Company for District 96 copy paper for the 2014-2015 school year?
Is it moved?
Second.
Rachel Morella?
Aye.
Michael O'Brien?
Aye.
David Cadama?
Aye.
Lisa Gayner?
Aye.
Randy Brockway?
Aye.
Mary Rose Mandia?
Aye. We've accepted the bid from Midland Paper Company, thank you. Next, we're gonna be dealing with the bid from the Gordon Food Service, who is not only our lowest bid, but it's our only bid. So may I have a motion to move that the Board of Education accept the bid from Gordon Food Services for grocery for District 96 2014-2015 school year?
Is it moved?
Second.
Is that comparable to last year too?
Yes.
I mean, I think we had the same.
Is it the same vendor?
We had the same deal, there was only one person that submitted a bid, right?
So Zach, can you comment, why, why do we only have one bidder on this?
The only other, we had another responsive letter, they wanted more time.
So, so this is food service for our lunch program? Is that correct?
Cafeteria.
Cafeteria, yes. And there must be multiple companies out there that do this sort of thing.
I'm sure there are.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if there's something integral to our requirements that's limiting bidders?
Like I said, we only received two and one just said they rejected the bid process because of time.
If I remember right from last year, I think we're small for ConAgra, I think that was.
Yeah, I remember that, one of them said we're too small.
One of them said we're just too small.
And is the other one on here, were they the ones that didn't have enough time or is it a fourth player?
Maybe we're too big for them.
Yeah, take a long time to. I mean, come up, I mean, what do we, just post some, post something and solicit bids and?
We post in, post in the newspaper, it's further along.
Alright, I guess we're ready to vote.
Randy Brockway?
I'll abstain.
Lisa Gayner?
Aye.
David Cadama?
Aye.
Rachel Morella?
Aye.
Michael O'Brien?
Aye.
Mary Rose Mandia?
Aye. We've accepted the bid for another year for Gordon Food Service. Next on our agenda is our D 96 2014-2015 crossing guard proposal. Like Zach, maybe to update us, or Bobna, you were at the last, were you both at the last meeting?
I can share, and then Zach can go through the calculations. I met with Peter Scolera and Time White, Time Whitesell, Chief Whitesell, a few weeks ago, and they had shared with me that the village wants us to match their funding. They right, currently fund 50%, they're looking for us to fund 50%. The annual cost per crossing guard is, or the per crossing, as you can see, is about $11,155. What the total is, what they paid total for this past year, 13, 14, was $66,014. District 96 cost was $17,603, which is about 27%. So the village was offsetting that cost. So the proposal they're coming, are asking us to do is the cost for next year, the 14-15 school year would be $66,931, so it's a slight raise of about, or a slight increase, excuse me, about $900, $915. So our D 96 cost would be about $33,465. The village would match that at 50% so that nothing would remain unfunded. If we stayed at what we're currently funding, so if you look at the two charts, if we stayed at what we're currently funding, which is about 26%, 26, 27%, the cost would still be $66,931 total. Our cost that what we're paying right now is $17,600, the village would match that, which would be $17,600 for $31,000, approximately $31,000 not to be unfunded. So that would, I don't wanna say force them, but that would allow them then that they would have to reduce the crossing guards by three because $31,000 would not be funded. So that's, the discussion on the table is, do we, as a district, match those funds of 50% or do we maintain our costs at 26% and reduce our crossing guards by three?
Where are they reducing the crossing guards?
They're gonna make that decision. They'll take input from us, but since it's a safety issue, the village will make the final decision.
David had asked a question, I think, about sort of our utilization of our lunchtime crossing guards?
We have three lunch, the village provides three crossing guards for lunchtime. And their hours are 1.5 hours per, per crossing guard for lunch period, at a cost of $19.23 for that time period.
I'm sorry, what was it again?
$19.23.
So for roughly $19,000?
$19.
$19.
Total cost $3,300.
It'll cost $33.46 for the, for the school year.
And where are those?
$33.46, $300.
$346.
For the year.
And those dollars are built into the exhibit, so you have, right?
Yes, they are.
So our share of that is $1,700, right?
But where are those located during lunch, just at the central light? Or is there some in the middle of town too?
There's central, and there's two in the middle of town.
So like the railroad tracks and one at the whatever?
Oh, I thought we had one at Ames.
Oh, I'm sorry, there's two, there's one downtown, roadside, the central, and then by the light, and then there's one in Ames, two central.
So three total for lunch?
So the total is about $3,300, so our share of that would be $1,700?
Yes, that would be our share of the cost.
Or roughly, yeah.
But how many people do we think crossed at lunch? Or how many children cross? I guess people's not the right word.
What we have is, we have approximately, each building has approximately 20 that need for lunch, but the policy we have is that the parent has to sign them out and then sign them back in. So the need for lunchtime, there is really no need for lunchtime.
Could be questioned.
Depends on the AM kindergarten kids walking to school, but they're going with their, their kids. I, I agree with David's point, I think, you know, we really need those cross, but it's the village's call on it, but we're not saving that, that amount of money by cutting that. So, if my math, if my math serves me right, we're talking about, they're asking us to fund about $16,000 more thousand this year than last year, to go from seven. this year than last year, to go from seventeen up to thirty-three. So that's sixteen thousand dollars is what we're, the bottom line is. I'm all for it. I think we went through this discussion before, and we're back three months, four months later. The village is not willing to back off from this offer. I just have that feeling, feel very strong about that.
It's kind of what I've heard. And that's eliminating, so we have a total of six crossing guards, AM and PM, and they would eliminate of those six, half of them, right? If we don't...
No, nowhere.
They would eliminate half if we, and they would make that decision where they would be.
Can we ask, I'd like to ask if we can table this until the next board meeting. I'd like, you know, the last time this discussion came up, we did talk about it extensively. But we did ask if a village official could show up and answer some questions, which never happened. Can we see if Peter Scolera or Chief Whitezel can come to the meeting to answer the questions for us? And I think that at the next meeting, we'll have a better idea of where we stand with our budget and our financial position too.
Yeah, and I think we could also ask about the lunchtime crossing guards too.
How important it is?
I mean, yeah.
Well, I'd say how important it is to us, necessarily to the village. I'm really, I'm willing, you know, we need to, you know, the school year is going to start, it's right around the corner. We have to get ready for it, you know, we have to be prepared. We need to know who, they need to know how many crossing guards they need to hire and get prepped for start of school. I'm willing to put a motion on the table that we fund for six crossing guards, eliminating lunchtime.
And it's, you know, kind of push it back to them to take it or leave it.
Lunch.
Lunch.
So what does it eliminate total?
So eliminates thirty...
Thirty-three hundred of the total, seventeen hundred.
So it comes down to about sixty, sixty-two or sixty-three thousand, roughly, right? And then you're willing to fund the extra seventeen, sixteen grand or so, provided they get real lunch.
Yeah, whatever that comes down to.
Has there...
Fourteen thousand.
With the new rules that you have, that have been instituted for lunch signing, is that really decrease the amount of children who go home for lunch? Is that what you've seen? Or maybe there's...
Well, I could speak to both. I don't think it decreases the amount. It depends on the... I don't.
Yeah, I think it, you know, who's going to sign their kid out and say, okay, walk home? I mean, you know, let's be honest, you go pick your kid up, you're going to walk home or drive home. And I don't, I don't see the need for lunch, and I like David's idea.
Oh, you're right, yeah, because...
I would disagree. I've stood at the corner over there at Burlington and Long Common, done some landscaping the last few years, and at lunchtime, and I've seen how hard those crossing guards work. They're, the children are usually accompanied by their parents, you know, at lunchtime, yes. But without a crossing guard, I feel as if their safe crossing is not assured, because people do drive crazy, and particularly at that intersection. So I think we'd be short-sighted in saving thirty-three hundred dollars and pulling our funding of those two or three crossing guards? Is that what we're talking about, pulling the funding of three crossing guards?
Just at lunch.
Just at lunch.
Yeah.
And it's seventeen hundred is our share of it, the bill to pick up the other fifty percent.
Well, or not have to pay for it.
Yeah.
Or not have to pay for it.
I can speak to the Ames crossing guard. In the past years, not this past year, but in the previous years, she helps both, it's not just, it has also to do with letting out of kindergarten in the morning and the afternoon kindergarten. So parents are dropping off, picking up their students at the same time over this lunch or over this eleven-thirty to twelve-thirty time period. So it's not just a matter of a few kids walking home with their parents. It also encompasses parents dropping off their kindergarten for the afternoon session, picking up their child from the morning session, and those that do would walk home. So it's more complicated.
The crossing guards are crossing them in, they're dropping them off at the door, at the drop-off spot. So the crossing guards aren't involved in the drop-off.
Well, the...
I know they're not, so...
The crossing guard is involved with the car passing that drops off.
Any part of this passing is a crossing, yeah.
It's an issue at Ames School. I mean, it's been important that it's...
Yeah, my point is that they should be, it sounds like they're being escorted by an adult. And that's what happens on the weekends. I see kids with their parents walking across the street all the time. It's just as crazy on the weekends too. I mean, that's a responsibility of the parent to get them across the street. So my motion is still on the table, if anyone wants to second that.
I'll second it.
Do you just want to, well, I'll always state it. We have a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded, to move that we fund fifty percent of, we take the village's offer to fund fifty percent of the crossing guards and eliminate lunch service, the lunch service for twenty...
We would maintain those, the full six crossing guards for the morning and for the afternoon.
Evening, but eliminating the lunch, the three at lunch, and for 2014-2015.
Randy Brockway?
Uh, no.
Lisa Gaynor?
Aye.
David Cadama?
Aye.
Rachel Morella?
No.
Michael O'Brien?
Aye.
And Mary Rose Mandia?
Aye. We've passed crossing guard proposal. Thank you. And Bob, will you inform then?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Next, board policies for final adoption from the IASB Press Update eighty-three. This would be the Policy five colon two hundred, Terms and Conditions of Employment and Dismissal. Policy six colon sixty, Curriculum Content. Policy six colon two fifty, Community Resource Person and Volunteers. Policy seven colon one eighty-five, Teen Dating, Violence Prohibited. And Policy seven colon three hundred, Co-Curricular Athletics. And Policy eight colon thirty, Visitors Too and Conduct on School Property. And I think these were all, I had their second reading at the last policy committee meeting. Does anybody have any questions or...
Make a motion to approve.
All right.
Second.
Apply an action.
David Cadama?
Aye.
Michael O'Brien?
Aye.
Lisa Gaynor?
Aye.
Rachel Morella?
Aye.
Randy Brockway?
I'll abstain.
Mary Rose Mandia?
Aye. We've adopted those policies for IASB Press Update eighty-three. Thank you. Next one is the Policy Update, Board Policy for Adoption. The update on Policy seven colon thirty, Student Assignment and Intra-District Transfer. Again, this had a second reading in our last meeting. Does anybody have any particular questions? And David, would you mind just refreshing me?
Yeah, this was just a real minor amendment to this policy. Our board member, Art Perry, had noticed that there was no actual reference to the exhibits that support the policy. So we just explicitly put that reference into the policy language.
Yeah, and I guess...
And just links it to the exhibits.
All right.
So I'll make a motion to approve the update to Policy seven thirty.
Second.
Manita?
Rachel Morella?
Hi.
Michael O'Brien?
Aye.
Lisa Gaynor?
Aye.
Randy Brockway?
Aye.
David Cadama?
Aye.
Mary Rose Mandia?
Aye. We've adopted Policy seven colon thirty, Student Assignment and Intra-District Transfer. Our next will be just a discussion, new business discussion item on technology infrastructure from Don. Are you ready to...
And this is just a review I just want to share for the audience. Mr. Tifano did present last month an overview of a staffing reorganization, where he got the information from, the data, the research behind it, looking at comparable districts, as well as some comps looking at devices and workstations. So all of that information, he's not going to present it again, but it's in your packet again. He did present it last month, so it's an opportunity for any of you to ask questions or revisit anything or clarify anything. And then Mr. Tifano is going to be joining us in closed session to specifically go over how this would impact our budget and our staffing for next year.
Is there any present, any...
Last month, some information was presented. I gave a brief presentation, but also provided about a six-page document, some of the research behind the conclusions that were drawn in terms of positions, staffing levels. You know, used research based on MIT, IBM, Urban Group, other districts. Also took into account salary information that was provided, research done via Robert Cap, and also career builder for the area and the types of positions. I think the other, some of the other supporting evidence in terms of staffing needs, I think would be the assessments that have been done in that. I think historically, we've probably been understaffed from a technology standpoint. Because if we've been adequately staffed, we wouldn't have some of the conditions that are ongoing right now, any work that needs to be done in order to get our infrastructure and backend services and structures really up to par and at a secure and optimal level.
Don, I've got these two job descriptions here in front of me. Technology Services Manager, Instructional Technology Coordinator.
I believe we're going to be talking about those in a second.
We'll be talking about those. Okay, all right.
Don, when will, you know, I guess I'm going to have to go back and look at the document you presented last month. But when will you be in a position to present a document of what your staffing plans are for the department?
Well, we started that at the last meeting. I mean, that was a, I mean, that document kind of summarized what we were looking at in terms of staffing levels. And then this evening, we're going to get into a little bit more detail in closed session. I believe that material's been provided.
Yeah, as much as we can, I would like to be able to discuss our organization structure in open session. And I know we've talked about this, and I know we're going to limit that discussion, but I do feel that, yeah, yeah, I would, you know, can you tell us a little bit about the Steering Committee? What will, what your plans are for the Steering Committee that you're going to have in a week or so?
Well, we've met, the Steering Committee has met before to really just kind of review some of the information that has been accumulated over the past, coming up on a year now, I believe, when the initial assessments were done. It wasn't a committee that I formed. I'm kind of taking lead, taking point on it currently. And what I think the goals of the committee are really to kind of review what the action plan that needs to be implemented. There's been action items that have been identified. I think that, based on the initial Steering Committee meeting, the feedback from the audience and those members that were able to attend was that it was a direction that they felt was the direction that the district should go. So continuing to meet with those members on updating progress on items that we have already begun implementing, and then discussion on direction moving forward. And, you know, the process of coming to a new environment and having staff that have really departed and really we're uncovering new things every day, you know, kind of peeling back the onion, so to speak. And with that, we have to adjust, readjust priorities, and we also identify new things that potentially will need to be done or at least considered.
Have the invitations for the upcoming Steering Committee meetings been sent out to the members of the committee yet?
Yeah, those actually went out about a month ago.
Okay.
Just a question, if you want, can expound about or clarify. It seems to me that the philosophy going into this and prior to your hire was to go more towards outsourcing. And I see that we seem to be kind of shifting in that philosophy, that we are not going in outsourcing direction, but more towards insourcing.
And I guess, you know, that outsourcing was not my approach or philosophy to it. And I think through talking with and meeting with Superintendent Charm Lewis, that, you know, I have a different approach. I believe that outsourcing has its place. I believe that, you know, just if we look at our, if we look at our facilities operation from a standpoint, we do have, you know, custodians that are, that do day-to-day operations, much like a technician would do. But we also have needs when we need to go out to experts and architectural firms to do major redesigns or construction companies to do major projects. Because from a staffing level, we can't really employ those individuals. So there is a need for onsite support and day-to-day maintenance in which it's truly beneficial to have those, in my opinion, those staff members who are highly invested in the success of the organization. And not that consultants aren't, but they are, again, they are individuals that don't work directly for us. They work for third-party.
Don, does that, to what degree will we be using, do you foresee us using outsourced personnel to support our operation?
Major projects, projects that do involve a, you know, more of an engineering-type background as opposed to a systems administrator-type level support. Also projects that would impact day-to-day operations. I mean, we could have a staff, but if we're employing them, if we're utilizing them for large projects, then they're not handling day-to-day operations. And a school district in every organization has day-to-day operations such as break-fix, maintaining the services that we utilize as a district. And we utilize a lot, and it's increasing. The number of devices and endpoints or nodes that we have continue to increase. We have more devices than we do staff and students. So I mean, we're, there's a lot of points of failure. We have equipment in the classroom such as interactive projectors and document cameras. And every piece of equipment that we put out there, the tech department is responsible for maintaining it. From a staffing level standpoint, you know, I think that the numbers that we're asking for right now are fairly conservative. It's, other districts around our size do staff as much, if not more than that. And I think we have to look at what our goals are, the direction that we want to go. And if we're looking to expand the use of technology, we're looking to really evolve technologically, then that would not require less staffing, that would require more.
I think when we had, again, our technology forum, and I understand you weren't here for that, I think the game plan at that time was going to, we were going to put out RFPs or RFQs and begin, you know, begin the process of writing proposals for specific needs, infrastructure needs, for email, for security. Mike, I don't know if you remember some of the issues. What's the status of that? What's your plan? I mean.
And if I could just interrupt, or just interject, I should say, what was decided after that technology forum was hiring a technology director, letting that person come in, assess the situation, and then decide what we need. Because at the time, we had five different plans going on. We needed emails, we needed servers, we needed wireless access points. I mean, there was three to five different things that were hot-button issues, help desk. So we waited, we hired Don, and then now he's assessed the situation, and I know he's looking at the email servers and the wireless access networks. Those are the two priority things I'm going to talk about.
Well, we have the network infrastructure assessment for the purpose of doing a redesign. We know that our connectivity is not where it needs to be in order to support the number of devices we have, and for the ability to, for students and staff to access the resources that, you know, 21st century educational environments need to access. We really don't have a wide-area network for our district. I mean, our, we operate almost as independent networks, and so those independent networks all have to be maintained. It's, you know, from the standpoint of the network infrastructure, we're at, we're school districts were, I mean, when I left, when I left the school district in La Grange seven years ago, we already had a wide-area network established, and where our servers internally were talking to one another. Whereas we don't have that unified system in place here, that we don't have a wide-area network. We have a lot of, again, independent networks where if we create a user at one location, we have to create them at the other locations as well if they happen to use that building. It's not efficient, and it's not, it's not a modern-day network. I think, in part, over the years, I think in part because of staffing, because staff really did not have the ability to plan and to implement and to, that is a very time-consuming process. And it does, it takes its toll long-term, and I think the assessments have shown that. And there are a lot of areas that are really high priority, and we are really tackling them one at a time, or, you know, a few at a time. Given that with the consultants that we have on staff right now, you know, they still can't, we can't address all 20 problems at once. We have to prioritize and really focus on a few at a time. And we are making ground. We've, some of the priorities that were identified, such as the, some security and safety issues at the building level, the, I know the intercom systems didn't have battery backup in the event that, you know, power was down, but there was still the need to communicate across the school with their intercom system. Well, that's been addressed. The E91 compliance, that, we already have the lines, the additional phone lines that were needed to be compliant added, and by early next week, we'll be E91 compliant with our phone system. So we're making, we're making those strides. The mail system, we are in the process of testing the next mail solution. It's also a matter of now that we have to move over user accounts, we have to move over all our historical archive data, which there's a lot of it, and we're doing it over very slow connections. So that process also is time-consuming. We're getting there, and we're making headway, but the, also the environment in and of itself sometimes poses some challenges, because even as we're attempting to work on projects that have been identified as priorities, things still crop up, and then resources are directed away from that in order to support day-to-day. And what Net56, the consultants that are on-site, what they've been focusing a lot on is, are the projects. And once school let out, well, prior to school letting out, they were focused more on day-to-day. The three people that they had here were trying to support day-to-day operations, and they did not advance any projects. Once school ended, they were able to start advancing projects. So from that staffing standpoint, what does that tell us? From a day-to-day operation standpoint, even the three people that are being provided by the consultant were just keeping up with the day-to-day operations and could not advance projects.
So, Don, your reorganization of your staff, is that for advancing projects or dealing with day-to-day? Both? What is the game plan there? At least in the short term, let's say, the next 12 months?
In the next 12 months, and what I touched on last time is that we need to, we need to have that support in place to support day-to-day and begin, and also be able to address new projects. What we, what the consulting firms, and like at Net56, what they are also providing is, we have a level of catch-up that needs to take place. And I think once we get caught up, then what we're looking at is, moving forward, we also have to look at, you know, what our capacity is as we start adding on projects, and always take that into consideration, because we still have a finite capacity in terms of what we can support in taking on new things. When those things that are identified as a high priority surpass what our capacity is, well, that's when we need to look at consulting for those types of projects.
Aside from staffing conversations, I guess I'm asking, you've been here for, you know, not really all that long, a little, what, June 3rd? And when will be an opportunity for you to maybe give us a report to tell what your findings are, where you think we're headed? Is there some value to having maybe a bi-weekly report of different projects? And, you know, you've described some things right here that have been, you know, that are interesting to us. So how can we become, without burdening your time with reports, to learn a little bit more about, you know, what you're doing and the problems you're solving?
Well, I do provide a periodic update to the superintendent, which is basically a synopsis of progress on particular types of activities that are going on. It could be, you know, formalized, right now it's in a shared document, that could be formalized into a report form, if that was so desired.
Is there, would anybody?
I think that would be, I think that would be helpful, at least to me. It's almost like a project management-type report, say, all right, here are some of the key priorities, here's the timeline, here's, this is priority one, this is immediate need, this is medium-term need, this is a long-term need, you know, and can we see that all laid out?
Yeah.
Certainly. And then we have, we have been generating those documents with Net56. I mean, we use project management tools in order to do just that, and show where we're at, you know, along the way, you know, with the progress that we are making.
We do have a Google Drive, and if there's some way of, you know, putting just the documents out there, on a shared drive, that would be helpful for us as well.
Certainly. And for the, no, for the Steering Committee, I began using another resource because it also supports attachments, and I did share a link to it.
Yes.
Where, and that might be another, you know.
Another vehicle?
Forum to do it as well, because then I could also support, I could also, there's also areas for discussion, there's areas for attachments, and it's a project management tool that I've used in the past to really promote collaboration and communication.
And one of the things we're going to talk about, I think, as a cabinet, with Director of Special Law, Director of Technology, Director of Academic Excellence, Director of Finance and Operations, is giving those weekly documents and making those available to you. So specifically, Don had shared some things that he should, did in his previous district, and it was exactly that. What are this week's tasks, follow-up, you know, longstanding projects, you know, what's been completed, what's still outstanding, and we'll make that available to you on a weekly basis.
But at the same time, with all that, what I'm hearing is a lot of documents, a lot of documents. And so, at some point, we need to have like an executive summary of all that. So high-level management, here's the different departments, here's their priorities, here's their, you know, in the next three months, this is what they're looking to achieve, here's the milestone, six months, 12, you know, four months, and then further off, and just basically high-level. And then, we're able, we also are able to drill down on that as well, we can get into the weeds.
And I think maybe a focus on, either on problem solving or programs that, you know, we think are helpful, because, I mean, we, I get the sense that technology is going to cost us a lot of money, people are going to ask us for a lot of funds, and so, as much as we can understand what you're doing, we'd like to understand that.
Certainly. And I think what's important to point out is, the district has already invested a lot of money in technology, and there's a lot of technology that's out there, and that is aging. And if we're going to maintain, if we want to maintain the same levels, at some point it needs to give place. We have some server equipment that is well beyond my comfort zone of having that equipment, the equipment be that age, and that means that leaves us vulnerable, leaves us vulnerable to potential data loss, downtime, so forth. And I think it's, it is a process of putting in place processes and procedures, equipment cycling days. So we know that it's not a matter of, well, are we going to replace this piece of equipment or not? It's no, we have, we have an equipment cycle, that these types of devices get replaced every X number of years, and they get cycled out, and new stuff comes in. And that's really the most effective way to operate, because you can't continue to try to keep equipment alive, because it actually ends up costing you money, more money.
I don't think anybody here disagrees with that, we just want to understand it.
Sure, certainly.
And I don't know what the best communication vehicle is, I mean, we don't want to burden people with reports and all that, but.
No, and it's been my experience that we don't, the place to start is just at the beginning, and that we'll come up with something, and if that works for you, great. If it doesn't, if you need more, if it's too much information, we can scale it up, scale it down from there, more than ever.
And I'm thinking that you do have, you know, I'll use the word vision, but sort of a path, not that it won't be modified, of where you'd like to go, or where you think we need to go over the next two to three years, and if you could share that with us?
Certainly, but I think that the vision isn't, it isn't really my vision, it's listening to where, the types of things that, you know, other areas and other departments want to take the district. And it's making sure that, as a technology department, that we have the infrastructure to support it, and that we have the training, we have the ability and the capacity to support from a training level, that we have highly skilled instructional technology staff that are supporting just beyond, hey, let's add a piece of software, where they're actually involved in pedagogy and how teachers teach, and how students, not even how teachers use technology, but how are students using technology, and how are teachers facilitating that versus, hey, we're just going to use technology. You know, part of, part of my plan, but we need to get some things, you know, accomplished first on that infrastructure side, is to really begin to assess where are we at from an instructional technology standpoint, from where our students at, where our students at from a 21st century skill standpoint, where are their strengths, what are their deficiencies, and what types of resources do we need in order to build, to address some of those deficiencies, so that they can obtain and have those 21st century skills? Same thing goes with staff. If they don't have good, solid technology integration skills and facilitation skills, then it's a matter of that we need to build professional development to support that as well, so that they're leveraging the resources that are being provided to them.
So, Don, from a, changing gears a little bit, from a pragmatic standpoint, I saw your reports that came to us about the excess computers over at Lyce School, and it sounded like maybe 20 out of the 30 were usable, but your recommendation was to recycle them all. I, at least I.
Well, I think usable is, they're going into their eighth year.
Yes.
So, do they power up? Yes, but once you deploy them, and then if they break down, are we going to replace them? Or are we going to fix, you know, there's.
Well, I pose that question just in light of the fact that I look around the libraries, and we have essentially the same desktops, I see three of them over here. Now, these may be not eight years old, but at one point, you kind of told me you thought that we could use more desktops in the libraries. Have you rethought that? Have you changed your mind? I mean, for student use?
I think it really depends on how, how are students using technology? How do they use the library media center? So it's, I think it's a matter of looking at how is the, what resources are they accessing? If more resources are needed, yeah, you could add, you could add desktop computers, you could do more mobile computing. It really depends on the types of resources that they're accessing.
Well, I guess going into September 2014 here, do you have a sense of how these learning centers are going to be used coming into the new year? I mean, do, we have a laptop program, and do the, do the students bring the laptop into the library? And do they, so, does the desktops then become redundant? Or are the two supportive or mutually exclusive? I'm just trying to get a sense of how we might better use 20 excess computers.
And I think that's a great question. I think, though, from the standpoint of what we've had time to focus on, it goes back to the identifying priorities, and we can't, we can't have 20 priorities going on at one time. And right now, our focus is trying to get the, the computers that are being used for one-to-one ready for the coming school year, and to get all of the devices that we have, every iPad, every iPod, every computer managed from a central location, and putting in a mobile device management solution. And right now, we're doing a lot of testing, we've had a lot of great success with that, which we can update you on, and by the end of this month, we will have, you know, pretty much in place the solutions that we want to move forward with in order to better manage these devices. I think what happened in the past is that, well, I know what happened in the past, is that over the summers, they spent a great number of hours getting those devices ready for the coming school year. And so they, and what we're finding is, we probably don't need to spend that much time. We're doing more, it'll be about, probably about 80% planning and 20% execution, whereas I think in the past, it was about 10% planning and 90% execution. So there's a lot of labor invested in getting those resources ready for the coming school year, when I think we can work smarter, not harder, and really leverage technology to take care of itself, and that the, once we have that platform and that system in place, then we save time every year from this point forward. And now granted, five years ago, these technologies to manage these devices weren't in play. Well, now they are, let's make sure that we're looking ahead and looking at what's out there that can help us. I think when you are understaffed, people don't have time to look forward. They're just focusing on what they have, and they get caught in that grind of, we just got to, we just have to have things ready for the coming school year. So it's.
All right. Thank you, Don. I would like to, you know, maybe continue this discussion in, you know, another, at another time. In the meantime, I'll just announce what our future meeting dates are. Oh, I'm sorry, we have the D96 Discipline Code Handbook first reading before I talk about future meeting dates. Lisa, can you just give us a, I know you were involved with this handbook?
Yeah, the edits that you see are the result of the committee's discussion. So, and the committee. So and the committee was made up of staff, administration, parents and myself. So the issues, some of the things that you see changed were brought to the committee for change and we're trying to take things out of the discipline code handbook that's not really like related to discipline, like school hours, which are someplace else. So you'll see those lined out. Basically, we'd just like everyone to reflect on it and we'd have one reading and if there's questions, I can try to get the questions answered. I know, David, you have a question and I have to follow up on that because I don't know the answer. I can field them and get the answer from the committee.
How many people were on the committee?
I want to say 10-ish, sat about right over there.
About 10 and I've, they've been the same people who've been on them for a while, other than our staff here?
Um, yeah, some parents, there's a parent, there's new parents that rotated on this year because some, no one would go to our school.
Some mix.
So, yeah. All right. And I, and again, I think this is a short term document. I think it, for this year, it will be our discipline code, but I think there's aspirations from the administration to make this a much more comprehensive and align it with the Illinois Principals Association, if I think I have that right, template, to make it more cohesive and better. So I, I think it will be changing next year, but we need to have something out there for this year.
All right, thank, thank you for that explanation.
I know in the, one of the responses you gave, there was some proposed language, new language to address one of my questions on.
About the social probation?
About social, yeah, the social probation section references special privileges, which was probably a good term at the, with the previous version because throughout the document, they talked about special, what special privileges all throughout, but we deleted a lot of those sections. And so now there's, there seems to be, just by, by my read, what's left, the only special privilege I could see is, I think it was after school activity or student council activity? No, no, lunchtime, I'm sorry, lunchtime.
And intramurals.
Yeah, lunchtime was the only one I, I saw. I didn't even see intramurals.
Well, what?
So there was some suggested language that was provided there and I can't, I can't find the email.
So I've got that, so I've got the language in front of me.
Okay.
What specifically you brought out, David, and then I forwarded it on to the administrators, Mrs. Weston, Mr. Gatz and Mr. Guirman, and they came back with the change to the language. So I guess I wanted to know, Lisa, how would you like us to, would you like us to send you changes and we include them in a second reading? Or, because what we're hoping for is second reading and approval at the August meeting.
Do you want to send the changes to the whole committee or do we not? I mean, because those, those changes have not been seen by the committee.
No, they were just, they were just sent to the two of you.
Maybe we just do that as a.
Send it to the whole committee.
See if there's any.
Yeah, I don't see, how, how do you have a, how can you have a first reading today with some of these changes still pending? We don't even know what the language is.
Because you'd like to see a final document with all the changes.
Right, right. I think ideally, all of us would want to see a final document for, for that first reading and then second reading, unless they're just minor, but, you know. You know, the other, the other question was about cyberbullying under sexual harassment section because I, that is a new, you know, disturbing trend right now is, you know, sexting and and using Snapchat, you know, for, you know, abusing, you know, sexual abuse, verbal abuse with a sexual content. And so I, I believe that based upon that trend, it needs to be included under the sexual harassment section.
And I wonder if we want to talk about that in policy first before we put it in, because that would override the handbook, you know.
Well, we, we have talked about that, you know, because, you know, we've had policy updates that relate to cyberbullying and sexual harassment. And I know we've talked about whether or not it needs, how that will get into the codebook, into the discipline code.
Do we have a policy for social media?
Yes.
I was supposed to follow up and I did not, so I'm.
We do, but it's not at all like.
It doesn't lay in right, right?
Not current. That was one of the things, that was a priority that we wanted to follow up with.
So your point is you would like the final corrections in and then we might should have a, probably have another first, or another first reading.
That's what my suggestion would be.
Because there were some changes that were made.
Right.
And I agree with that and so that if, we're not reading a document that's changing.
Right, right, right. I mean, I, I agree that we would like to have it finalized, approved before start of school, but.
Well, what can we do on August? Ugh.
There we go.
I, you know, it could probably keep us all night. So, okay, so let's go with that, with that approach then.
Get all the comments to.
Make sure we've got a final document we're presenting to the board and that, and you had comments that you wanted, there's some changes to.
Do you want it on the August nineteenth and then take action in September?
We could.
I mean, that was our own internal, that was our own internal deadline to have it on the first day, but we went pretty much all year without it last year, so I mean, we're ahead of the game this year.
You could do a first reading on August fifth too and. Yeah. And then do a, if there's, if we're okay, you could approve it on August nineteenth and you'd be there.
Okay, so any suggestions to the discipline code handbook can come through me and I'll forward them on to the committee. By next Friday, the twenty fifth, because at the same time as the facilities? So by seven twenty, for next Friday, August, excuse me, July twenty fifth?
Yes.
Okay, then we'll combine, combine them all and I'll send them to the committee.
Then Mary Rose, if I could, maybe I should have made this comment during maybe public comment, but if I, if I may, I, I know I may sound like a broken record about Senate Bill sixteen and Springfield's discussions about changing the education funding system and all, but I do, I would like to encourage and invite all the board members and even people of the public to go to the RB District two oh eight's website and look at and watch the video that they have just from this past board meeting where they had Representative Zaluzki talk about Senate Bill sixteen. Senate Bill sixteen, just quickly, you know, is a, is a piece of legislation that changes the education funding system. It would cost us $800,000 in funding. We would lose that. It's, it passed the Senate, it didn't move in the House. I'm not, I don't think it's going to be, it may not be reintroduced as exactly the same way. There's, there's, there's a lot of concerns about it, but it is, it is the way Springfield is thinking about that. School, the school districts from affluent neighborhoods will have to fund more of their own educational needs and including the mandates that come from Springfield. So it was, it's a 30 minute video where he talks, he, where Representative Zaluzki was fortunate enough to, we, he was, he attended and gave his thoughts about what Springfield is thinking about education funding.
This is just on their, on their website?
It's on their website, yeah. And it's, it's a clip and it's, there's only, there's actually, they have a, it's nicely set apart from the rest of the board meeting. So it's, it's basically just that discussion.
Okay. And what board meeting was it on?
It was last week's.
The July eighth?
Last week's, yeah, last.
July eighth, I think it was.
Yeah.
So it was just recent. And, you know, I would really encourage us to try, Mary Rose, if you could, you know, continue your discussions, your communications with, with the president, with President Cindy there. I mean, if he has those reach outs to legislators to let us know about it and we would do the same to them. Because if, if, if Springfield's considering legislation that's going to impact them, it could very well likely impact us as well.
That and, and we wouldn't have to have Representative Zaluzki speak twice.
Right, right. Whether it's him or Representative Hernandez, who also represents River, the parts of Riverside, who is on the Education Committee or State Senator Lightford, who represents the North Riverside part of District ninety six. I mean, she sits on this, on the Education Committee for the Senate. We can all kind of coordinate, even with the other feeder districts, like American Gross.
I'll talk to Matt and see how we can, when we're doing legislative outreach, maybe find some ways to coordinate or at least it's, or legislative education.
President?
Thank you, that's a good suggestion.
I would like to, to propose that at our next meeting, that, that we have on the agenda addressing the parking lot at Hollywood School. I would like to have the board make a position on that.
All right, thank you very much. Got a note, we'll get it there. Thank you. Again, I'll just announce the meeting dates for, for the future. August fifth, of course, we're going to have a special finance committee and probably a special meeting as well with any number of items on there. Our regular August nineteenth, a policy committee meeting, we'll be hearing from David again in his regular spot. August nineteenth, the regular business meeting. September second, our finance committee meeting at 7:00 PM. September sixteenth, the policy committee meeting, right in front of the September sixteenth regular business meeting. And then our first education committee of the new year, of the new school year would be on October seventh at 7:00 PM. And then, of course, October twenty first, the regular business meeting. Lisa, did you say 7:00 PM was the time you're proposing?
I did.
Okay, for the August fifth meeting.
Seven to eight thirty and then eight thirty the other maybe.
To eight forty.
No, no, it's not looking like that right now.
No, I'm sure, I'm sure we can really load it up. All right. Now, may I have a motion to enter into the closed session for the purpose of discussing the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint laws against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity?
Smoke.
Second.
Juanita Roca, please.
Rachel Morello.
Aye.
David Cadama.
Aye.
Randy Brockway.
Yes.
Lisa Gaynor.
Aye.
Michael Bryant.
Aye.
Mary Rose Manger.
Aye.
Let's adjourn to the closed session.